Okay, have a meeting come to order. Worthington City Council Regular Meeting Agenda 5:30 PM, Monday, August 14, 2023, City Hall Council Chambers. I've got everybody rise for the flag of allegiance.
Flag of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, welcome, everybody. We do have an addition change or addition to the agenda. We have a case item under G9, which is going to be Geotech Agreement for Services Underground Heating, Oil Tank Removal at the former Lakeshore Service.
Move to approve the agenda with the addition.
Okay, we have a motion and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried. To the consent agenda, we've got City Council Minutes, regular City Council Meeting Minutes of July 24, 2023, Special City Council Meeting Minutes of July 19, 2023, Minutes of Boards and Commissions, Park Recreation Advisory Board Meeting Minutes of August 2, 2023, Housing and Redevelopment Authority Meeting Minutes of June 21, 2023, also City Council Business Application for Parade Permit to Block Streets, City of Worthington, and Bills Payable Expenditures listed at 601, 602, and 604 are approved by Lakes and Water Commission. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve consent.
Second.
Motion seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried. On to City Council, Case Item, Acceptance of Program Funds.
Okay, Velma and Gary Court Wright generously donated $25 to the Worthington Police Department. The donation may be placed in the police program reserves and be utilized to enhance crime prevention programs. Action is requested to adopt the resolution and accept the $25 donation.
Motion to approve and a thank you. Second.
Okay, yeah, we have motion seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. The Park and Recreation Advisory Committee has received a request to place a bench at Sailboard Beach. The request is as follows. Sheila Peterson to place a bench at Sailboard Beach in memory of Rich Peterson. The application and resolution accepting the donation of the bench is included as Exhibit One. This donation meets all the requirements as set forth in the park donation policy adopted by City Council, and the Park and Recreation Advisory Board recommends the City Council accept the donation. Council action is requested to adopt the resolution accepting the donation of the park bench as presented and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign any necessary agreement.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have motion seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried.
Thank you.
You bet. Looks like we're on to City Council Administration.
Okay, first item of business is a presentation with Bradley Peterson of the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities. He's going to provide us an update on the activities and successes of the coalition at the most recent legislative session. Bradley, had a chance to visit with him for a while this afternoon, give a tour of the city, and it's been a little while since you were here. Mindy, I have his.
Yeah, so thank you, Steve, Mayor and Council. Again, my name is Bradley Peterson with the firm of Flaherty and Hood here on behalf of the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities. As Steve said, it's been a couple of years since I've been in Worthington, and I am just gobsmacked frankly by all the interesting and good stuff that you guys have going on here. It's really remarkable, and it's, I think, contains a lot of lessons for other communities as I might. My brain is just spinning with all the stuff here, so well done on that accord. So again, here, on behalf of the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities, we try to get out and visit as many of our cities as we can in the interim and kind of give an update and give you guys a chance to hear what we've been working on and also ask questions and share what's of concern for you. So as I'm going along here, if there's things you want to interrupt me on, absolutely, you know, whatever I can do to give you the most knowledge possible, definitely. So we'll go on to the next slide here, and just as a reminder, CGMC, so we represent over 100 cities across the state outside of the seven-county metro area, working on issues related to local government aid and property taxes, environmental issues, economic development, transportation, annexation, and land use, and then some labor and employment issues strictly from a greater Minnesota perspective. Next. So I'm going to only really highlight a couple of issues in my discussion today, but I did want to give you at least a sense of kind of the big, big picture of things that we worked on, and there's an insert in your packet, too, that gives you a sense of some of these things, too. So I want to focus most of my discussion on local government aid, the bonding bill, and then some of the challenges that we had on environmental regulatory policy. But in addition to LGA and the bonding bill, we also worked on lead pipe identification and replacement, permanent and ongoing funding for city streets of all sizes, quarters of commerce, housing, childcare, you name it. We were pretty active on a number of fronts. And if you do have questions about any of the things that I don't highlight, certainly feel free to ask if you're interested. Next. So the session this year was, I think, unlike anything that a lot of us have seen, certainly the dynamic with the budget surplus and the DFL trifecta in terms of the legislature and control of the governor's office drove the discussion and the environment in which legislating happened. So, you know, at the beginning of session, you take our priorities, you take the DFL priorities, you take all of the other priorities of interest groups, you know, from January to May, you've got all of the going around and around and around and around, and you come out the other side, and I think for the most part, I think we actually ended up with some pretty good outcomes from a CGMC perspective. Now, there are going to be things that people like that the legislature did and things that people don't like that the legislature did, depending on your personal politics, but I think in many ways there are some things good that happened that I do want to highlight. So, next. So obviously, the budget forecast really drove the show going into the session, $17.1 billion, and that, you know, we'll see if it grows or not here with the next forecast. That forecast there for the out years, the '26, '27 years, was before they spent the $17 billion from before, so that's a number that definitely take with a grain of salt. It will be different, it will probably be lower, but my working assumption is that there will be some sort of surplus here going into the next session. Next. Like I said, it was a very different session in a lot of ways, just the sheer volume and speed of legislation. They hit the ground running in January, and they didn't take a break or a breath until they got through the finish line third week of May. The DFL majorities in the legislature are dominated by metro area members, and that's something that we had to contend with and deal with as we went forward, and it also meant because we have fewer rural members in the majorities, there aren't as many backstops to potentially harmful things. So we had to kind of really work hard to make sure that unintended consequences, bad ideas, things that just didn't work from a greater Minnesota perspective got flagged. And again, some of those we were successful on, and some of these we were less than successful on, and it just was issue by issue. Next. So I'll start with local government aid, and this is one where you can go to the next slide even. You know, we've been working for the last several years on some formula updates, working alongside the League of Cities, the Metro Cities Organization, and others on reforming the formula and updating it. The formula generally gets an update every 10 years or so after the census, and so it was time to do so. The last time the legislature did a major overhaul of the LGA formula was in 2013. So we'd been working for two years really with those other groups to come to an update that we could agree on and that we thought worked for our members. And then we also were requesting an increase of $150 million, which we thought was appropriate given the scope of the surplus. Next. But there were a lot of competition and challenges in terms of funding, even just within the tax bill area. You know, put out schools and healthcare, those, you know, were obviously going to be an object of a lot of funding discussions, but even within the tax bill area where LGA comes from, we were competing with ideas on childcare, independent tax credits, the Walls checks, the public safety aid, housing aid, any number of different things were competing for those dollars in what became a very small pool pretty quickly. $3 billion sounds like a lot of money, but when you've got folks who want to spend a lot more, it goes pretty quick. Governor Walz, who is a supporter of local government aid, didn't really do us any favors at the beginning. He came out with what we felt was a pretty low-ball opening recommendation for his budget of $30 million, and we hit him on that in the papers and in the media. We thought that $30 million, given the size of the surplus and the fact that LGA had not been increased in several years, was pretty inadequate and pretty disappointing. And in sort of acknowledgement of that, when he did do his supplemental budget, he did bump it up to 40, but of course, we still wanted a bunch more. So, next. There's just a quick picture of a couple of our other mayors in action, Mayor Cuffey from Virginia, Mayor Schultz from St. Joe, both testifying in the legislature on LGA, and shows you that it takes folks from all parts of the state to work together to get these things done. So looking at just the overall appropriation, our proposal, the 150, would have actually been seen an increase in the second year because we also included an inflationary adjustment to the LGA appropriation. That had been something that was being done in the late '90s and then went away in the early 2000s with the deficits that we experienced as a state then. So you can see the governor and the Senate came in at low at $40 million and no inflationary increase. The House came in at $100 million with the inflationary increase we were recommending. At the end, 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 once all of the jostling for dollars was done, as you know, we came out with $80 million, and the next slide just shows what that means for the city of Worthington, so a breakdown of each one of those proposals and what it would have meant. There's also a chart of that in your packet, which also on the flip side of that actually has some information on the LGA formula updates, and if you really want to nerd out and dive into those, I certainly can do that with you as well, but gives you a little sense of some of the changes that were made. Next slide, bonding bill, all right, move on. So there had not been a bonding bill since 2020 in October, and so we were a couple of years behind. They do require, as you know, a 60% majority vote in each chamber to pass based on our state constitution. And so early in session, the House was able to take the, you know, outlines of a bonding bill that had been worked on last year, fill in some of the details, they passed it early in session. So we were hopeful that we'd actually get something done pretty early in the session. However, anytime anybody at the legislature tells you that they will get something done early, do not believe them because it never happens. And in the meantime, the Senate GOP, because this was really the only leverage that they had in session, being in the minority, wanted to leverage that discussion for negotiations on some other things, meaningful tax relief, aid for nursing homes, that kind of thing. As session drug on, it became a high-wire act in terms of whether or not a deal would come together at all, to the point where the DFL was threatening to pass an all-cash bill, which would have meant that they would not have needed DFL or Republican votes, and that would probably not have included as many rural projects as it turns out. And the next slide actually goes through some of that, I won't belabor it too much, but on any number of the things that we have really been working on that we care about, the cash bill would not have been up to snuff in terms of meeting the needs of greater Minnesota, especially when it comes to areas of economic development, housing, public infrastructure through for wastewater or water. And so the alternative that they were proposing was pretty bad. So, next slide. We then put some pressure on everybody, but in this case, the Senate GOP, letting them know that there's very few things that they really are going to be able to influence this legislative session, and a bonding bill that does good work, that builds infrastructure in their communities would be one of them. So we leaned pretty hard into them the last couple of days of session. And with that, and we can go on to the next slide, they did come to an agreement, an agreement that included $300 million for nursing homes, that was the concession from the DFL, and then on the bonding bill, capital investment bill side, they passed both, a traditional bonding bill based on debt, and then a cash bill. And out of that, we actually did pretty well when it comes to money for the Public Facilities Authority and water and wastewater, the BDPI grant program, which is the Business Development Public Infrastructure Grant Program that helps build out the public infrastructure related to business development, some money for housing, some money for childcare, a new program that we were looking at, and then local roads and bridges amongst all sorts of other good local projects around the state. So getting the bonding bill done was a pretty important thing and something that the legislature needed to do. How did it come together? Public pressure from the CGMC and other stakeholders, we actually worked very closely with the construction unions, who are big stakeholders in the discussion, local pressure from city officials and constituents, the passage of time since the last bonding bill of three years ago certainly had, I think, some things to do with it, the credible threat of a bad alternative got people to compromise, and then finally legislators who were actually willing to compromise and get something done. And so it really was something that probably was always going to take all session to accomplish and get everybody on the same page, but we got there and I think with some pretty good funding items. The last thing I'm going to really focus on is in the issue of the environment, so you can go to the next slide. I mentioned before some money for lead pipes. The federal EPA is asking all cities to do an inventory of their lead service lines by October of 2024, and so the state, and again, we worked very closely with the construction unions on this, was, I think, looking to do something on this issue. There had been a proposal last year to put some money into a program, but it really, with the surplus, I think, came to a head this year. And so we were, we had a big ask, but we were able to get $240 million, which is a lot of money, but it's not, it's about a quarter of what you're probably going to need all said and done, to start the process of cities, helping cities do an inventory, and then also put together plans and then actually help pay for the replacement of those, both the publicly-owned city side and then whatever might be on the private homeowner's side, to do both, so that hopefully there's no cost to private residents. And so that, we worked very hard with the legislature, with our friends in the construction unions. In the House, a unanimous vote, and in the Senate, there were, I think, five no votes. So a pretty good vote on getting this done, but it really is just a down payment. Like I said, there's going to be a lot more resources that are going to be put in to finish the job. You know, the state in this legislation will set a goal, it doesn't really have the force of a law, it's just a goal, but to have all lead pipes in the state replaced by in the next 10 years. So an ambitious goal, and it's going to take more funding to do, but we're at least got it started. Next. Again, I mentioned the historic investments in water infrastructure, so I don't need to necessarily belabor that, so we can go on to the next one. And this is where we get into some of the challenges, there's my colleague Elizabeth testifying. So with the new majorities, there was, I think, a lot of emphasis on environment issues, climate change, and what the legislature was referring to as environmental justice, to ensure that our environmental shoulder and resources were going to communities that really are affected by environmental challenges and that sort of thing. And while that, I think, is all good as a goal, you know, in some cases, the types of ways in which they were identifying the communities that these dollars should be targeted to weren't necessarily going to be solving a lot of problems necessarily, and we're diverting resources from greater Minnesota, and we figured there's enough money to go around, which there certainly was. And so there are any number of proposals, both in terms of the funding piece, fighting off changes to the Public Facilities Authority and their distribution formulas that would have really routed a lot of additional money to the metro area versus greater Minnesota, that would have hampered environmental or economic growth in our communities, many proposals around that, that we're coming forward with, again, little consideration for how they would affect greater Minnesota communities, what they really meant for communities outside of the metro. And so I'll give you one example. You know, one was an idea around cumulative impacts, and so the idea being, and it really came from a neighborhood in North Minneapolis where you had a garbage burner, you had a steel manufacturing facility, lots of folks packed into a very dense neighborhood, and the health outcomes in that neighborhood were atrocious, lots of asthma, cancers, that kind of thing. And so based on that experience, though, members of the legislature developed sort of a statewide solution that would have put every air permit and every water and wastewater permit through a pretty additionally rigorous analysis as to whether or not it was adding to any of these health disparities, and really would have put a lot of power in the hands of the MPCA and the MPCA Commissioner in terms of denying permits. And so we took a pretty aggressive, strong stance that while, again, the outcomes that you're gunning for are good, the approach probably doesn't work, let us work with you on it, can we massage this, can we add some ideas? Where we eventually got to was the idea that this law would only affect the metro area and then Minneapolis and Duluth and Rochester, so the metro, Duluth and Rochester, exempting most of greater Minnesota. And so that's where we landed on that, but I think there will be a lot of that type of work that we'll have to do, where we're going to have to, again, explain the unintended consequences and maybe how proposed legislation doesn't really fit a greater Minnesota context very well. That's going to be ongoing work so long as we have the same legislative lineup. Next. So looking ahead, 2024 is a traditional bonding year, and I do think that there will be a bonding bill, and again, we'll be focused on the kinds of infrastructure that greater Minnesota needs. The capital investment committees are already out touring the state based on submissions that were made to MMB earlier this summer. I would anticipate that on your ballot in 2024, you're going to see a couple of constitutional amendments. There will certainly be one related to reauthorizing the lottery money that goes towards the environment, and I would anticipate that there will probably be a couple of others. Like I said, there will be a surplus, probably, that's my working belief now, I could be wrong, we'll find out in November and February when the forecasts come out, but I do think that there will be additional spending next year. There will also be fixed items from the 2003 session. You can't do that much legislating that quickly and not have mistakes made. In fact, there's already been a $300 million mistake identified in the tax bill that they're going to have to fix right away. Lots of policy, as I mentioned, again, probably along the climate and environment side of things. Starts February 12, which is going to be later than this past year, but probably still much too early for some of us. And then, of course, we're going to have an election here at the end of 2024. We've got the US House, the Klobuchar Senate seat, the Minnesota House, all 134 of them will be up for election, and then a presidential election that I don't know anybody who's looking forward to, but such as it is. So it's going to be an active year. During the election season, we do spend a lot of time educating legislators and would-be legislators on our issues, how does LGA work, why is the PFA important, what's are the housing and childcare issues in greater Minnesota, so we push out a lot of information, and that's how we kind of inform the electoral debate, so we've got a lot of work ahead of us. Next. So coming up, we've got a couple of events, our Fall Conference in Willmar this year, middle of November, where we'll be rolling up our sleeves and really focusing on the upcoming session and fine-tuning our proposals. Legislative Action Day, where we bring everybody to St. Paul and brief you on the issues, set you loose lobbying your legislators, and then have a nice dinner at Mancini's afterwards. And then our Summer Conference next year is going to be in Wake Park in St. Joseph in the St. Cloud area, so I think already very much excited and looking forward to that. And so with that, I'd be happy to take any questions or comments or thoughts or whatever you've got.
Steve?
The lead pipe, that first funding, that is just to do the inventory, is that correct?
No, both. That's both. So there was money set aside for the inventory piece, and then the remainder is for the actual removal. And so if you're, you know, different communities are at different sort of places, some have not even thought about or have any idea what's under the ground, some have a pretty good, you know, map out, you can click on your house on a map and it'll tell you what your pipes are, and then everything in between, so it's meant to do both.
Okay. And the LGA formula, is that in the handout?
Yeah, so the...
The previous and the changes to the formula?
Yep, and so on the flip side of this, you've got the basics of the formula here up at the top, which has not necessarily changed. What has changed in terms of the formula is really down there at the bottom with the need factors that went into assessing a city's need, and so those were the things that got updated based on new census information, passage of time, new regression analysis, all of that kind of thing. And so many of the factors were retained because we still found out that they were fairly predictive of city spending patterns, and then some were added or changed or swapped around. So it's not super dissimilar to the formula that we had before, but what it will do, and what I think we were sort of seeing was going to be the experience of a number of our cities here upcoming, was the formula looks at, you know, it assesses your need and says, okay, how much LGA should you be getting, but of course, that's a number that the legislature is not quite spending, so then that gets shrunk down to accommodate whatever appropriation they actually have. But then as we add more money and as the formula just operates, and some cities don't need as much LGA as they do today, tomorrow, then money gets redistributed. And so for most of our cities, and I think Worthington would certainly be in this case, what the formula says your maximum need is, is now more than what it was previously. And so as long as we are putting money into the formula, Worthington should be continuing to see a pretty decent chunk of that, and that's the case with most of our cities.
Yeah. And a change like this is what I had advocated for, that Worthington and other cities need to be addressed uniquely based on population demographics, income variabilities, and I never understood the pre-World War II, pre-1970 housing.
It actually, though, is pretty predictive, and we tested, we tested pre-1950, pre-1960, pre-1970, and there wasn't much difference. And, you know, I think arguably, some, you know, in some cases, cities with older housing stock, you know, have, you know, a lower household income and some things like that, and so it actually is fairly predictive of city needs. And so I think, you know, the, this is always an interesting process because people key in on like certain, certain pieces of the need formula, they kind of, you know, stand in their front yard and kind of look around and see, you know, how does this, how does this compare in my mind's eye to how my community looks? It's really kind of putting it all together and then comparing it against your tax base that you really get the fullest, fullest picture.
And just for council's knowledge, we, Bradley and the Flaherty and Hood firm, we use them quite extensively for legal consultations, especially with employment law, so we, and they provide great service in a very unique form of legal advice when it comes to labor relations and personnel, so we work with them sometimes too frequently, but that, they have always served us very well and provided great service to us.
Counsel, anybody else have anything for Bradley?
Would you touch, be able to touch a little bit on the public safety aid?
Yeah, yeah, and so in response, we'd been getting quite a few questions about that, so we did put a piece in here, just kind of explaining the very basics of it. You will be getting your public safety aid here with your second LGA check here at the end of, end of the year, and, you know, it's one-time aid, $300 million in total went out, $90 million is just being distributed to the counties and tribal governments, $210 million is being distributed to cities across the state, and it's all cities are going to get some amount of aid. At one point, that was not the case as the proposal went forward. This was really something that was championed by Governor Walz, I think, in response to some of the public safety challenges that we're seeing throughout the state. You know, the uses, I think, are pretty straightforward there in terms of, you know, crime prevention, mental health crisis response, victim services, training for personnel, equipment, first responder wellness, you can use it for, you know, salary and bonuses and that sort of thing. You can't buy tanks or hand grenades or, you know, anything of that nature, nor can you use it to construct, you know, facilities or buildings or use it to offset costs associated with alleged misconduct. So there are some guardrails there in terms of how you can use it. As I've talked to cities across the state, you know, they're really keen into equipment, training, and then some are using it for wages and personnel costs.
Disbursement based on population size or LGA?
Yep, yep, based on population.
And Worthington was certified at 605,000 before, and will receive that late this year, is that the...
Yep, yep, in December. I assume, I assume it'll be with or very closely tied to you. Yep, in December. I assume, I assume it'll be with or very closely tied to your second LGA payment.
All right. Anybody else?
Brad, thank you very much. Keep up keeping us on the map anyways, right?
Absolutely. Well, it's, it's good to be back in Worthington, and I really, I really do appreciate everything that you guys are doing here. And keep up the good work and good luck with the rest of your meeting.
Thanks, Bradley.
Thanks.
All right, we have...
All right. Next case item is a second reading of text amendment to change in city code. This is the time and date for the second reading of the proposed ordinance, the text amendment. This is local sales and use tax. As you recall from our last meeting, it was to add, this had to do with the change in the local option sales tax ordinance or the statute that was written. So we had to make a minor change to our ordinance in which we added reference to Minnesota statute 297a.99. This is our second reading.
Move second reading.
Second.
Okay. Motion seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carried.
All right. Next item is change in signatories. The banking institutions require resolutions approved by their governing bodies to make changes to position titles and authorize personnel to sign on city checking and investment accounts. So First State Bank, Southwest currently has Michelle Ridd as a signer, and Michelle no longer works for the city. So we need to remove her and add Denise Deitchman, the Assistant Finance Director. Bank of the West currently has Deb Olson as Finance Director and is the only signer on the Certificate of Deposit and Money Markets. Recommend that we add Denise Deitchman as an additional signer. United Prairie Bank again has Michelle Ridd as a signer on our accounts, and we're recommending to remove her and add Denise Deitchman. Council action is requested to adopt the resolution, designate the changes previously stated for the new signers and the above accounts. And you have a copy of the resolution that was handed out with, in front of us. So council action is requested.
Move to approve.
Okay. Motion and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
I should say any further discussion? Oppose, same sign. Motion carried.
All right. Next item is Southwest Mental Health Center promissory note interest rate adjustment. So the city Worthington entered into an agreement with Southwest Mental Health Center Incorporated in May of 2012 to advance funds for, and repayment of those funds to assist in the construction of the facility in Worthington. City advanced $400,000 of hospital impact funds in March of 2013 for a term of 30 years at 2% interest. Project also received funding from the county, following counties, Cottonwood, Jackson, Nobles, Pipestone, and Rock Counties. The agreement, which was included in Exhibit 2, stipulates that the interest rate may be adjusted on October 1 of 2023 and 2033. We received a request from Southwest Mental Health to adjust the current interest rate from 2% to 3%, an increase of 1% for the outstanding balance on the city Worthington loans. So council action is requested to approve their request of adjusting the interest rate.
So this is a loan that we gave out, and they've requested that we increase our interest rate that they pay.
Yes.
It's interesting. I wonder if one of them maybe approached, approached them, and then they said we should review all of them?
Well, it's, it's an interesting agreement that had these interest rate adjustment steps at 10 years and at 20 years through the loan. So they are likely being proactive to approach us about adjusting the interest rate and then the other way around.
Will we know what, it seems weird that they are all different. They can all be different amounts. They should almost all be tied together. Because if we would go forward with 3%, and then Rock County decides that they want a current interest rate, does it say what they're proposing to everyone?
No, I did not get any information as to what they were approaching the other counties. And if you look at the original terms of the city Worthington and the five counties, everyone was at 2% interest, other than Nobles County that was at 1%. So I really can't provide much history on how this all came about.
Well, it's hard to say no.
Yeah.
So I move to approve.
Something that was kind of already in place, too, it sounds like, at intervals, but...
I think it's a necessary service, too. And if it goes up, everyone's cost that uses the facility is probably going to go up as well, so.
So we have a motion. Need a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carried.
All right. Next item is a draft ordinance for motorized golf carts. Statute 169.045 states that the governing body of a home world charter city may authorize by ordinance the operation of motorized golf carts on designated roadways under its jurisdiction. Council directed staff to research and prepare a draft ordinance for their review and consideration. That's included as Exhibit 3. The draft ordinance would replace the city's current ordinance, which is Exhibit 4 is found in Chapter 71.5 of the traffic code in the city's Code of Ordinances. If you want to note that the items that I highlighted in red are those that you may have some discretion or options on as how you may want to approach that. So if you want, we can go through the ordinance. And again, we're, we're looking for direction. This is not taking steps to adopt the ordinance, to give it a first reading, but to give you some consideration. As you look under designated roadways, council has the discretion as to what they will approve as a designated roadway. Some examples are, could be based on speed limit, which is 30 miles per hour or less, or you can have not addressed that at all, no mention of speed limit. You could have, one of the other items is you could have a, a map that would either indicate those that are permitted or maybe even easier identify city streets and probably even go as far as identifying the county roads and state highway roadways that are within our jurisdiction where they're not allowed to, to ride. Get into the 71.52, the operation requirements. Some of these are spelled out as, as far as the state statute. Operator must have a driver's license on designated roadways, except when crossing any non-designated roadway or highway. So you can cross county streets, state highways, as long as you're going from one designated road to another one. You can limit the operation. The statute says it's limited to daylight hours between sunrise and sunset unless equipped with the original equipment, headlights, taillights, and rear-facing lights. Or you could designate that to be legal on the streets, they have to be equipped with the original equipment. You could limit the time period. One of the cities we looked, we looked at limits it from April through October. The next section is part of the statute, and operating in inclement weather, except during emergencies or where visibility is impaired. You do have to display the slow-moving vehicle emblem. They must have rearview mirrors. The signal, signal of intention when turning or stopping, it does allow you to limit it to hand signals. Or you could have signal lamp or device that's approved by the Commissioner of Public Safety, or original equipment, brake and turn signals. And I think some that I've looked at are street legal, others are more golf course legal and may have headlights and taillights, but that may be for getting to and home if you live on the golf course in, you know, after hours. You do have to have insurance. And they designate that if you look under this statute, where substitute the term motorcycle for golf cart to determine the level of insurance, have to obey all traffic laws. Number of people on them is limited by the manufacturer's seating capacity. And then if we get into, if the city's going to permit them, you know, then we, who's going to be the, who's going to issue the permits? City clerk? Is it going to be the Director of Public Safety? You can, you can issue a permit for up to three years, no, no greater than three years. So those are some of the, some of the things that are mandated, some that council has discretion. We could require inspections before we would approve the licensing or the permitting. So it's a, the ordinance as drafted is relatively brief and succinct. But it's wherever council may approve the direction I'm going. If you read the current ordinance, it was, it was specifically written to address a request from one or two facilities. And every, every part of that ordinance was in there just to, as it addressed those facilities for seniors. And didn't allow anyone else to get a permit unless you were classified as an institution and had 15 or more residents of either disabled or, I forget what the age, if it's over 55 or 75, whatever it was. But so if we move forward, I think, Minnie, I probably rely on you, we would take action to delete the existing text of the ordinance and replace it with whatever new text is, is approved and adopted by, by the council. So we're, we're beyond accomplishing it for this season, given how much time it would take. And this, the ordinance that we drafted has not been reviewed by the city attorney. So that would be another step that we would want to include in that. But something for your consideration that we can take up today or at a future date?
I'm, I'm fine with just taking this and looking at it with your changes in it, kind of absorbing it and going over. You know, one thing I had brought up to me when we talked about is they said, you know, are you going to have all kinds of restrictions on it? If so, then, you know, why? You look at today's world, and anybody can go buy an electric scooter or an electric bicycle now that goes 30-plus miles an hour.
Yeah.
And they're driving everywhere we are today, by anyone, any age, moving at very good rates of speed.
On the sidewalks.
All over.
Streets, sidewalks.
Bike trail. They're going 25 miles an hour on the bike trail.
The question was, is how restrictive is this going to be? Because you can go to any box store or any local place that sells a bicycle now, or online and buy an e-bike that goes all of this, if not faster, and no requirements. So...
Would it be simpler if we had it very similar to side-by-side?
That's, that was my thought. I mean, can we, can we just add that golf carts onto the side-by-side ordinance that meet headlight, taillight requirements?
Some side-by-sides aren't street legal and some are. Some golf carts are street legal and some aren't. So, I mean, can it be that simple?
I think it can be. I did not review our side-by-side ordinance to, to see if a simple...
UTVs, ATVs.
Just addition of or, street legal golf cart.
Yeah.
Gets added to that as one of the permitted things, and they have to buy the same permit.
That would, are side-by-sides only legal on city streets, or are they also legal on county?
They're not, no.
County or state.
What do you mean, they're not, not what?
They're not legal on county roads.
You see them out there more than in town.
Legal until they get caught.
Well, and that, we kind of put this together to, to give that array of being more restrictive or less restrictive. What is in the black type is mandatory under state statute.
Have we asked Great Life, are street legal golf carts allowed on their course? Those carts that go 20 to 30 miles an hour, are they?
I see a number of...
Usually comes down to what tire is on them for like the ones...
For what is allowed on the course. Yeah, it's turf tire only. You can't have the aggressive tread or anything like that.
So there could be someone that would buy one knowing that they don't golf, that would just want to use it in town. And as long as, I mean, we, we wouldn't have any preference over the tire then. But, one question that I had with this one was it continually references the original equipment, headlights, taillights. And so is that just the manufacturer's brand? Because if I bought one two years ago, based on the current ordinance where I couldn't drive it on a city street, and then we say you can only buy a brand-new one that has it already installed, and I didn't, you know...
But, but that allows for OEMs. So, you know, as long as it's original equipment, manufacturers, products, if it's an add-on package you can buy for a cart you already have that doesn't have it, then you can do it.
Oh, okay. Yep.
So this allows for OEMs is what that is. I mean, when it says...
It doesn't mean it came on the cart originally. It's just manufactured by the same.
Yeah. Now, can you go to, and this isn't, can you go to any store in town that may sell the floodlights or whatever that you can do? That's what it's saying. You can't just makeshift your own.
Right, okay.
Because some people might not, you know, might have a flash, a pen flashlight and say, too, and say, hey, I got headlights on there. And, you know, put whatever. You can't put the magnet ones. You have to have the, either installed or the owner.
Okay, gotcha.
Created ones.
And they do have, they do have kits for that stuff that are acceptable, not like your speed buggy or your car.
These golf carts I see out there, do the taillights, are they brake lights or are they just a taillight?
Well, they should be brake, too.
I think they're tail and brake. Now, all of them have blinker packages.
Yeah, I was going to say that the only thing I see missing would be turn signals.
Turn signals, yeah.
Blinkers.
Are you from Montana? We did go up to Chatek this weekend, and they have, we're on Valhalla Drive. You can drive golf carts there. And it was interesting seeing how they treat it, and the people using hand signals. And, I mean, they had a whole event based on people driving golf carts. So it was kind of interesting to hear them talk about how busy the island was with golf carts, but...
I'm not a huge fan of hand signals.
Yeah.
They don't use them on bicycles either, which that's their form of turn.
Which...
You very rarely see that.
All right. Well, okay, so we'll, we'll look at the, the option of amending the side-by-side.
Yeah, we have time on this. So that's why I'm like, let's look at that and see if that might be a better option. We're, yeah.
And if it isn't more...
It's not, it's, no harm, no foul. We're looking at doing it. It's just, would that one just be simpler for the permitting side of it, for the, all of that? Because we have all of that in place.
But the permits there are a state permit, right? For, usually have an actual plate on them.
We don't, we don't permit.
It'd be a city thing.
No. No, that's where I think it could be an add-on that golf carts, you might need to still do the registration of them. But if, maybe they can follow the, all the rules that are already in place.
I'm not sure if they have to register those through the state, like your trailers or anything. I thought so.
And that's where you, you show them you have insurance with a golf cart. If we're, if they're not coming in, we have no idea unless they're pulled over. So that's where I do think there would still be a city component to it. But maybe there could be less additional rules that are just for golf carts.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. We'll continue to work on this. Next item is revisions to the accounting clerk position guidelines. So, you know, we periodically review the position guidelines. So, you know, we periodically review the position guidelines and update the essential duties. Attached are as exhibit five is the revised position guidelines for accounting clerk position. The revision that we made would include adding the special assessment responsibilities to this position rather than having a singular special assessment clerk. We're going to fold that into the finance department and fold those responsibilities into the finance department rather than the engineering department. So it will be since the majority of that work really is is focused on one period of time during the year, probably a six to eight week period in the in the in the fall. We want that position to also gather extra responsibilities within the finance department. So it's in the same salary grade, doesn't affect the the budget, will not add staff. This is filling a staff person that has been due to our earlier resignation was reassigned from the assessment clerk into the finance department. So now we need to to fill this position that was left open. So council action is requested to approve the amendments to the above position.
Move to approve.
Second. Okay, we have motion seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
Okay, this next item, discussion regarding possible amendment to the city Worthington Nobles County Prairie Justice Center lease. City Nobles County entered into a lease in June of 2002 to facilitate the construction of the Prairie Justice Center. Generally, the city's obligation in this lease was to fund 43.34% of the 20-year phase three bonds in annual payments of approximately $200,000. Lease was amended in 2016, adjusting the city's lease space from 12.72% of the entire Prairie Justice Center to 12.89%. The lease was amended again in 2021, adjusting the lease space to 15.97%. And that lease also was amended to add the the capital improvement reimbursement that the city is responsible for to Nobles County that would commence once the phase three bond was retired, which occurred in February of 2022. So under these terms, capital improvements reimbursement include the city issues annual payments of $197,500 to the county until the debt was retired. The lease stipulated an annual simple interest rate of 2.433%. That would accrue annually on the outstanding principal. Current outstanding principal is approximately $958,000. And there's a spreadsheet of the various projects that were done over the the last handful of years, the city's share and how much the city is responsible for repaying back to Nobles County. Members of Nobles County Board of Commissioners have indicated a desire to amend the current lease by having the capital reimbursement annual simple interest rate adjusted annually based upon a mutually agreed upon formula. And I think what we're doing today is just providing this for information that we anticipate that Nobles County will propose some means of amending the the current lease and having an annual adjustment to the interest rate on the outstanding balance of capital. And council member Cummings and Copeland serve on that committee if you have anything else.
The other thing we brought up right at the end of the meeting was whether the percentage of lease space would also change with the kids piece now being condoed off. But they were going to look into it, I think. We weren't sure about whether that would change it or whether that's already not included in the formula.
It is included.
It is included.
It will have a change.
But then and how they do that will be curious because how do they are they able to specifically break off the walls and roof and HVAC units and everything and isolate them so that they're not part of the what would remain as the Prairie Justice Center? So that improvements or repairs would be specifically limited to that entity?
Or would the county get a payment from kids piece to kind of have a holding pot for when something does go wrong? They attribute so much to VAC to that part of the building, so.
I think I think based on some of the granting and the funding that they're getting for that to the use of that facility, that it has to be a standalone. And that's that's the parameters of why they're looking to conduit off, because in order to receive the funding, it has to be a standalone.
Yeah, and so the way it is now, there's essentially three different means of looking at repairs. If if it's something that is encompasses the entire building, like the heating plant, our share is the 15.89%. If it's something that is mutually shared by the two law enforcement agencies, such as the garage addition, and then we share that 50%. Some things we we have no obligation if it's improvements just to the court systems, that is entirely on the court. So if you look at the spreadsheet, you can see where the some of the some of the improvements are share was 50%, some was 15.97 and some was zero. So and the second amendment to the lease is what was actually proposed by Nobles County back in 2021 and was agreed upon by both the city council and the county commissioners. So I think our discussion is if they they want to propose an amendment to that lease, we'll certainly take it up for discussion.
Okay, thank you.
And is this the last item?
We have two more.
I've got two more.
Authorization to advertise for bids, Center for Active Living.
Yeah. Okay, so we finally have the plans completed. If you recall, we had water damage over the rack of all courts in the Center for Active Living. The roof was replaced last fall and ran into some corroded structural issues with the metal decking and that was replaced, new insulation. So now the new roof is on, the building is watertight. Now we're ready to do the restoration work on the two racquetball courts as sustained water damage. We are ready to go out to bid and just as reminder, since we talked about this so many weeks ago, the base work will include replacing the hardwood floors and the wall and roof panels that are, you know, specialized composite material for racquetball courts, lighting and and everything to restore it to its original condition. And our plan is to restore both courts to original plain condition. And then as an alternate, the folks at the Center for Active Living have really requested additional meeting space. So given that the popularity of racquetball is not real high at this point, we would take some steps to renovate one of the racquetball courts into a meeting space, put acoustical wall panels, attach them to the wall, put a suspended ceiling in with with lighting and and have to do some modifications to the HVAC and then have it wired for meeting capability. The base work is covered through our insurance. The added work for the alternate to do some revisions to the meeting space are that would be funded through the through the city. So we're ready to go for bid and if you can authorize us to advertise for bids, we'll start bidding this week.
Elena?
Once we get these bids, they'll come back before.
Yes, they will. Yes, yeah. Bids always there'll be about a three-week advertising period, we'll get bids and then they come to the council for their final approval.
These are the bids for the reconstruction of the two courts?
Yes, and there'll be an alternate that would include the the additional work to make to make that one of the courts a a much more accommodating meeting space.
Gotcha.
I'd move to approve the plans and authorize the advertisement for bid.
Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
Motion seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
All right, last item is a professional services agreement with Geotech Engineering and Testing out of Sioux Falls. We've have begun demolition on the Lake Shore Gas Station. There is an underground heating oil tank that has been in sight that we were well, we were aware of that. It wasn't anything that was a surprise. Depending on the size of the tank, it it may be exempt from having to follow MPCA tank removal guidelines. We don't know the size, the former owners couldn't offer us any help. There is some liquid in there. So we thought the most responsible route to go is to have an environmental consultant on site for that. What we think is going to be a very limited time when we get around to exposing and lifting that, getting that tank up and then deal with if we have to do any soil testing around the tank basin and then also disposal of the liquid that's inside. So we just actually received a proposal from Geotech this afternoon. So council, our request is to approve the proposal from Geotech and possibly by the end of this week or early next week. We did ask that they require that the work be done on the site prior to Turkey Day and I think they've got a good start on it today.
Okay, motion?
Move to approve the Geotech bid.
Okay, motion seconded.
A second.
Okay, motion seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Only thing I've got is we did a goodwill proclamation on August 8th, lunch hour anyways. So August 8th is proclaiming that it's a goodwill of the plains day in Worthington. And also did go up to the Southwest Initiative Foundation. They had a kind of a, I don't know if it's a regional meeting, but they had a meeting up at the Painted Prairie Winery anyways, I went up there. They had one over at the Round Lake Winery and that was the same night that our cannabis meeting was anyways. So wanted to just make some contacts anyways with that group anyways. So that was fun stuff, so that's all I got. I don't have anything.
Okay.
No report.
Chris?
I attended the Coalition Conference on Thief River Falls. You heard most of a great summary by Bradley at the beginning of the meeting. Just one point out there, it is kind of the the theme was money, money, money. The government, the state government earmarked a lot of money to be to be doled out, but the not all the methods and processes for that has been finalized, but there's going to be there's housing money, daycare money, parks money, roads and transportation, public safety aid, just something for our staff to be on the lookout for when when those dates, times come up. Who knows? And some of them are will be right away, some of them maybe not until next year or thereafter, as far as when the whole process to apply for those monies. But it's just something something else for our staff to be on the lookout for and to see where those monies can be spent. And then I did join the Joint Power Transit Board by phone because that was during the same time up there, but I'm sure Elena was present also. So other than that, no planning commission meeting this week or this month or last week. So that ends my report.
Thanks, Chris. Elena?
Yeah, to go off of Chris's report for joint transit board, we continue to look at the success of the Dial-a-Ride program, which is basically the where you call a number and then a bus will come and pick you up and bring you anywhere you want in the city of Worthington. And we look at the success of that program and then the dwindling usage of our city bus route. So every meeting, we kind of look at those numbers and we say, what else can we, what should we be doing? So we are going to continue to see whether or not that bus route will continue to operate in its current capacity or maybe look a little bit different here in the future. I had a Nobles County Community Childcare Task Force meeting last week and they talked about the Nobles County Town Hall that the Rural Childcare Innovation Program will be putting on. That's presented by First Children's Finance. And that will be a dinner where they'll talk about some of the data that they've collected. That's Wednesday, September 6th at the Event Center, and they do want people people to RSVP by August 25th. So that deadline's coming up here pretty quick. And then we had a the Prairie Justice Center Joint Powers meeting as well. And we kind of continued to nail down the location and some of the specifics about the storage facility that we'll have for inbound vehicles. Kind of ran into a couple of roadblocks there and so it'll be in a slightly different location, but we're keep we're going to move ahead and get some bids on that. That's all.
Okay, thanks, Elena.
And and on that, not a different location, meaning still on the same vicinity, just has to be a little further south because of wetland designation right along the parking lot and stuff like that. So feet moving, not somewhere else in town or anything like that. The other meeting I had was our Parks Board and we got a very good report on everything through at least because of the books through June with Waterworld and tremendous use. Over $33,000 in day passes in the month of June alone and over $56,000 in total revenue through June alone with season passes and the day passes. We talked about the things that they're logging and writing down, getting feedback on on things to talk about in the off-season for improvements and or adjustments to things facilities-wise, things that have been working well, things that need some adjustment, staffing wise. We will look as we adjust here, the hours have changed for the last week because of loss of staff with many of the lifeguards going back to college and doing that. And we we did spark to say, hey, while the fire's hot and this thing has been very successful and doing well, we should maybe look at getting right away another lifeguard training session while you still have people interested in stuff instead of waiting until the spring before the thing opens, since there's still a lot of good thought that maybe some of the younger high school aged, middle middle school aged that are eligible to be a lifeguard 15 and older could take that and have that so next year it's it's even more and a bigger pool because we said with vacations and all the things that go on in in that age group's lives, going from the 34 or 38 that she had, she liked to move that up to like 40 in the staffing area, just so there's it's easier transitions and moves. There was one weekend here a week ago that they were going to have to do time altered because of just lack of number of staff available with weddings and things like that. But Mother Nature cured that day and it rained all day and we didn't have to worry about that. So enjoy the last little bit of time at Waterworld. It has been going very well and we'll see the rest of the numbers as they come through. But it's been a very huge success and a very well-used facility.
This the last week?
The 20th, 26. Yeah, 26.
Saturday? Two more weeks, okay.
You got a little time yet, Chris.
Two more weeks, yep.
There's a few warm days coming up, so you can get the slide. I got a really nice, we were gone and I got a really nice video of my niece and my mother going down. we were gone, and I got a really nice video of my niece and my mother going down the tube slide. And all you could hear was my niece telling my grandma, get your foot out of my face.
All right, thanks, Chad. Steve?
Okay, we are gearing up for our budget meetings. We'll probably have two, possibly three sessions of about an hour over the next couple of weeks. Is there a preference if we meet over the noon hour, or would you rather meet at four o'clock later in the afternoon? Okay.
What?
It's.
We need to look at schedules.
Employee luncheon is Thursday at the Pavilion. Barbecue, I believe? Is that who's? So that's from eleven until one Thursday at the Pavilion. And in two weeks, we will be interviewing, in-person interviews for the YMCA Executive Director. That's the 24th and 25th of August. We're going to be holding those.
We have a meet the candidate, too, I believe.
Yes. Thursday night, the 24th, there is a reception, I believe at Forbidden Barrel, for, to meet the candidates, that everyone, all of the elected officials were invited to.
It was four-thirty to six-thirty?
That sounds about right, yeah. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else have any business? Otherwise, motion seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Opposed, motion carried.